Hi, Donna, I think you can hear me now.
Hi.
Hi Mel. Let's get things rolling here and we can get moving, okay? Call to order, the Wednesday, October 2nd, meeting of the Town Council Study Committee. I'll read the script. Let's see, members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting must use their full name for Zoom access. It doesn't look like we have any at the moment. If full names are not used, people will not be allowed to participate in the discussion. The town reserves the right, the town, because the committee reserves the right to remove any member of the public who doesn't use a full name or acts inappropriately. And we're using Zoom for this meeting, which allows the members of the public, as well as some of the committee members, to participate in the meeting on a hybrid basis. As a preliminary matter, this is Joe Brown, Chair of the Town Council Study Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons can anticipate on the agenda of present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Caroline?
Yeah.
Jeff? Doesn't look like Jill's out there yet. Beau? Curtis?
Yeah, I'm here.
There are no members of staff. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond to the affirmative. That's basically Mel and Mel, are Anthony and Patricia going to be on?
Anthony and Rachel.
Yes, yep, yep, they are. I see Anthony coming on now. There he is.
Hi Anthony.
And Rachel.
Can I get an eye from Mel and an eye from Anthony, please?
Here.
Hi.
Thank you. Good afternoon, this open meeting of the Town Council Study Committee is being conducted remotely, remotely, really, on a hybrid basis pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, ensuring public access to, not ensure public participation unless such, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public questions and comment if we have any members of the public who show up. We are convening via video conference as well as in person here in the trailer. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating, no, that some attendees are participating through video conference. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. And I wrote through this earlier, I think that's enough of the boilerplate. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda, please?
Second.
Caroline?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Thank you. Beau?
Hi.
Curtis?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
The Town Council Study Committee meeting is being recorded. I sent, I composed some minutes for our last meeting because everyone here had a chance to read them of a acceptable, acceptable edits. My move approval. I've read them. All right, can I second, please? All right, I'll go the other way. Curtis?
Hi.
Beau? Rachel?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Caroline? Joe? All right, so we've done the minutes. Great. I thought what, before we, Anthony, before we kind of turn the program over to you and deal with some of the charter issues, I thought it would be worthwhile to chat a little bit about the upcoming public forums. My first question was, is everybody planning on attending or are people planning on attending one or the other?
I'm attending both.
I plan to be at both.
I intend to be in person at the first one on Saturday, but I'm in New York on the next one Thursday. So I'll be on Zoom and Jeff's gonna chair and sort of run the meeting in person from the community room. So Curtis? What do you, what do you think?
I'll be at both.
Well, Caroline?
You're in person.
Okay. I'm sorry, Beau, did you say yes, no, one, both?
Both.
All right.
And like Rachel, anyone else?
Yeah, I, I am pretty positive about Saturday. I might have to do Zoom on Thursday.
Okay. All right. I mean, my, my thinking, and again, I would appreciate any feedback from, from the committee. Jeff or, well, I will, or Jeff will open the meeting with the, you know, the usual script and sort of the call to order, which I think we have to since it's a duly constituted meeting of the committee as well as a public forum. I was thinking if Curtis and I, and maybe Jeff and Curtis would kind of do the four, five or six slides to kind of set the stage and give whoever, whatever attendees in the audience show up a sense of, you know, what we've, what we've been doing and what we are proposing. And then I was just gonna let, you know, open the microphone and let people, you know, stand up and ask their questions. Now Curtis did have, I thought, an interesting suggestion, good suggestion about using, some people may not want to stand up in public and I thought we could capture, give people the option that anybody with questions or statements would not want to make a public comment, but write it, write their question down.
I just want to have these for feedback, you know, people may want to give us the question, have us pursue it.
I mean, I thought it was just a reasonable idea because not everybody's gonna want to stand up in front of a room full of people and say, I think this is a dumb idea, or I, I have a question about A, B, or C. So I like the idea of letting people know that that's one way they could set their input, communicate their input. Okay?
And what kind of receptacle do we have?
I'm bringing in an antifit basket. A hand, well, not a handbag, but a basket.
Does it have a closed top?
No.
Okay.
Throw it in as you go and we collect them and take them home and Joe looks at them and rips them off.
Okay.
I didn't mean that, for the record.
In terms of answering questions, I I don't really know, kind of, I don't know what kind of questions we're gonna get. And I suppose if they're simple and straightforward, we could say, yes, we think that, or no, we don't think that. But I certainly don't want to get into a debate with people or have an argument with anybody, not that I necessarily think that, but.
Well, what would, what would occasion an argument?
I think this is a really stupid idea. Why are you gonna, why, why are we even wasting time having this committee?
Well, thank you for your thoughts. Let's go to the next.
I really like Carolyn's approach. Tell us what your thoughts and concerns and questions are. And I, I had dinner with some people Saturday night and I, I told them and they said, gee, that's really great. So we're looking for questions and comments from people. For example, precinct versus at large is a very important question, whether we like it or not, we have to look at it.
Yeah.
Or combo, which is my leaning.
So, so after we go through the sort of intro slides, I think the, the comment ought to be that we're looking for input from all of you here and anybody who happens to be on the Zoom link as well. There are no right or wrong questions and no right or wrong statements, so just open up to people's comments. And it really says, I mean, I can't, I think, I can't think of a question off the top of my head, but somebody's gonna ask some question that we have. You know, we're proposing nine committee members. Okay, that's, you know, and that may result in a reaction or a comment, why? And I can, I guess I could answer that, but, I mean, I think, I'm happy to answer questions.
I think, I think it is very important that we all are answering the questions and that we are the committee and so we're all interfacing with people. I think it's extremely important that we do that.
Not just one person answering.
Yeah, I think, I agree with that.
And, you know, I, I was visualizing that maybe one of us would be in a corner and, and, you know, people could come over and talk with us individually if they want, but I think for them, I really don't like the idea of sitting at the table looking like a board. I'd rather sit, stand in front of the table after you make the presentation to keep it more informal.
How long are we allowing for the each meeting? I forgot the timelines.
Yeah, I, I couldn't find a time limit. I'm assuming that this is like a select board meeting, that they've just set a start time and they'll keep going until we're sort of run out of questions?
I bet they probably wrote it down. They usually like block off in like two hour chunks.
It's two hours.
So what, what about, what about having a, there are some groups that break into small groups so that each one of us can take a certain topic and talk about that. We can have a small group for the purpose of getting into one topic more than another. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do during the course of the meeting. We don't have to just be sitting there as a board or a committee receiving. We can make it more of a work group.
Well, I think, I think I'm on that track with you that if someone wants to talk, like, a couple of us can go in a corner. I need to all in the, in the room, we don't have to leave the room.
I would say, the only issue I have with that, I don't disagree, but that's a, a good format, is that removes anyone that's participating in a hybrid fashion from participating in conversations. Because if we all break up into groups and we're all away from microphones, they're just gonna stare at silent cameras.
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And.
I, I would have to say, I'm not sure I like the idea of like spinning people off into a corner. I think we ought to try to keep everything in the whole collective and try to make it as comfortable and as non-threatening to folks as possible.
One thing about working in the bubble here, the little wall garden that we are, you don't get any, like, real challenge. And challenge is good, like helps us solidify arguments. And so I wouldn't see it as a big deal. I'm gonna get hard questions.
No, I mean, I think there's gonna be some questions where we're gonna say, gee, that's an interesting perspective. I don't, we don't really have a particular answer for you today, but we'll take it back to the committee. Oh, hey Donna.
Yeah, hi. I think that's a great idea. I was just gonna suggest that. Um, it's great to keep it conversational and informal, as, as you're all saying. But I did want to say something, as, as you were revising the scenario for the, the next two meetings. Caroline had suggested in her paragraph, voters and non-voters. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Carolyn and, and thank you very much for including those of us who are non-voters, but very interested in what's going on with our government. So thank you, Caroline, I appreciate that. And thank you all for including that in, in your letter that went to the inky and, and the wire services and so forth. But I think keeping a conversation on, you, you folks have it. So you know kind of how it's gonna flow and, and you're right about if we don't, you know, if you guys don't have an answer, we'll get back to them. People do that all the time.
Well, I, I think that's the real benefit of this is especially if people write down questions and then we take questions and they go over the recorded meeting. After the meeting on Thursday, I'm, I'm happy to take it on as a project. Could compile like questions. Put those together. We can answer all of them in writing and just post them to our webpage and say, here are the answers to all of the questions we didn't answer at the meeting, for whatever reason. And then you can also, you know, create a little bit of a, of a database that says, we received 30 questions about the number of people on the council, right? And we received one question about districts or at large. So that's where people are most interested. Sure. And it, it could really help you refine your messaging to know where the questions and concerns lie.
That's great, definitely.
Yeah.
So you're, you're happy to collate?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, and then you'll pass it around to us so we can all see the answers and, yeah.
And this is gonna be video recorded, so we can go back and sort of capture any conversation, questions, statement, what have you, and do that sort of tally. I love the fact putting it on the webpage, so.
Yeah, and it, I always find that really helpful because you're gonna get an overwhelming amount of questions on one thing and not as many on another. So if that's the question that's there, I, you know, I think, not to steal Jill's thunder before she might say this, we'll probably get a lot of questions about things like, how zoning processes can work, right? And I know that's part of the stuff that was sent today, but probably get things like that and you'll probably hear that a bunch because that's what people are concerned about, but. There'll always be some surprises, too. Almost.
I had a question for you, actually, is the email account up and running yet?
I'm checking with IT, they're supposed to let me know today.
Okay, because I think that would also, you know, be a good idea to be able to tell people any questions or thoughts you had today or to come to you afterwards, you can send them to our email address.
When you say the web, how are people getting to us electronically? That would be email, right?
Yeah, right.
But we don't have that capability quite yet.
No, I mean, a worst case scenario, we can always just take a Gmail account that people have access to.
I mean, I don't think there's really any tech, this, this is just sort of doing the, getting somebody out at the town to turn it on, right? Hang on a second.
Yes, it, I know it's set up, I think it's just waiting for the final permission from the powers that be to give it the okay.
It would be nice if we could announce it sometime.
Well, I think it would be nice to have it for Saturday. Do you want me, should I bug Libby, is she the power that being?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we really gotta have that. That seems extremely important.
Yeah, we don't have a feedback.
All right, I will do that when I get home today. Any other thoughts? I'm sorry, oh Donna, you've had your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and after the meetings, it'd be great to do a follow-up and publish it however you want to fashion it, but publish it in the inky and the wire services. That gives us more exposure, gives people feedback as well.
I wouldn't expect them to put, you know, to print something as long as I'm, I would anticipate that to be, but I certainly see using that, you know, sending out a, a notice to people that the event occurred and you can read the FAQs on our website, so.
Yeah, thank you all for attending, these are some of the highlights, something like that.
Yeah, you can give them like the top three. Kind of the question you're asked the most. Anthony, you, you, you and your colleagues, have any thoughts from other public forums that you've witnessed or, or helped with?
Do you mute?
Yeah, I was gonna add, you know, you know, the majority are done in, in sort of the board, sort of sitting at the table and sort of receiving information. You know, there's obviously pros and cons to that. I think one thing that we've seen, and I don't know if it necessarily will work, depending on the number of people that you've have there, is we just did this with the Lieutenant Governor and Pat helped with this was the, what is it called, it's called the dot exercise? Because I was thinking about the tally of the questions and sometimes you'll get a lot of questions that are, as Jeff said, on the same topic. And so I don't know if there's some way for you to break up the, the meeting into halves and say, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, we're gonna receive, you know, we're gonna give you an opportunity to write down on note cards or however a number of questions. And then to maybe sort of have somebody group them together, post them at various places around the room and then give all the attendees dots. And so as they listen or ask questions for the remainder of the meeting, they can put dots on the things that resonate. So you'll get a, you'll get a, an idea of the types of questions people have and where, and where sort of the most interest is amongst the people in the room. That's sort of one addition that we've found helpful. I don't know if Pat, if you want to add anything about the, the data, dot exercise?
No, it, I'm just trying to think how that would work. As, as Anthony said, it depends how many people there are. But I think it can be helpful to at least rank the areas in some fashion that people have the most issues with, because you may decide, you know, keeping in mind that this is a forum for public input and you may look at some of these and say, oh, maybe we need to tweak this because we had several concerns. So, yeah, that's one way, definitely one way of doing it. I'm not sure if we can explain it well, you know, right now without, you know, kind of giving you a visualization. But we can talk more to, about that outline.
And in fact, as I, as we're just sort of mulling it in my head, because you've already got sort of the kind of consensus document, you can maybe break down the, and you could do this offline, sort of break down your, the current sort of draft charter and some topics and have people, the dots, so you can collect the questions and then you can have people sort of put dots on where they have concerns or interest and want to turn them over. So there are a number of different ways you can sort of structure that type of exercise around them, which we've got. But it would be unique in this sort of situation. A majority of the time, people are sitting as a board and they're just receiving and collecting the feedback that they get from people that come to a mic or podium or what have you.
Right, so people, more typically, people get up, talk, get to the micro, go to the podium, ask a question, make a statement. And, you know, and we have, we either answer the questions if we can or thank them for their input or their comments and basically let them know that we'll, you know, gather and, you know,
Discuss.
Discuss this at a future point in our committee meeting, I guess.
Right, but unlike the select board, it is not our policy in this, in the public open session to just take in and discuss later. We should, I mean, the idea is that we are interacting with the public and discussing it at the time. And there may be some questions that we, we just don't have, we haven't come up with where we are yet. And so, you know, it would be more prudent to, to ask them for their ideas so that we can take it back and discuss it. But stuff that we've already discussed, I think it behooves us to interact with a conversation. Otherwise, we're, otherwise we're closed off and using a different process than what we're advertising ourselves as. This is called the public information and exchange. We're listening and we're also answering questions.
I see it as a dialogue.
Yeah.
I think it'll evolve, it, it'll, if you have 400 people there, you'll be listening. If you have 25 people there, you'll be exchanging.
Right, and I, somehow I don't think we're gonna have 400. But it would, you know, but 20 to 50 would be nice.
Great.
I think 50 would probably be miraculous, but.
Well, we hope everybody comes.
Well, we'll see.
And what's the sports schedule for Saturday, by the way? Home or away?
I have no idea.
A lot of them have home games on Friday, so may not be bad. It's pretty early, too, so.
All right.
All right.
Jill has a.
I'm sorry, Jill.
Hi, yeah, I just, how many, I missed the first minute or so, did you say how many slides you're gonna show?
I, I think it's six or seven, Jill. I, you know, I, that slide deck that I've used or we've used in a couple of our presentations over the summer, I think it started at 15, it's, I've, I've taken a lot of slides out, so. Curtis and I met with the Nantucket Town HOA or whatever, I guess, week or so ago. I think it was six or seven slides.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it was enough, I mean, you, you, I know you guys are like, oh, we want to hear from the public. The public needs something to react to. They, they don't really know how this works or what it is. So I just want to make sure that they've got something that they're like, you know.
No, I, I agree. I mean, I, I was just thinking, you know, seven to 10 minutes of who we are, what we've been doing, you know, some of the high level stuff that we've decided and open it up to questions. And then.
Yeah.
I mean, I think what I'll try to do is spread the questions around, so, though, you know, those of us that are there, you know, if it's a question you want to answer, look like you want to answer it, I'll pick you. Okay. Any other thoughts on the, on the sessions?
Well, we're, we're gonna look over the, we discussed zoning and we have a flow chart and that was hopefully to help prepare us for the question.
So that, that's, that was actually for the, I, I didn't know if that was, I, I didn't join you guys last Monday. So, so that's, those, the stuff that Anthony sent around, that's to basically deal with the zoning process?
Well, I had raised it as important for us to understand using Anthony, Anthony referenced a flow chart that he was going to give us so that we could discuss it more robustly as an example on Nantucket, since Nantucket is a little different zoning than other places. And I think, so we have it here.
So is it, so just, I'm just gonna do it. Hang on, Kelly, we just want to turn it over to Anthony and go through that. I don't, I wasn't quite sure whether that was how, how we wanted to deal with it, with those materials, so. Anthony, can I turn it over to you?
Sure, I think there was a person on Zoom with their hand raised, so I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, but Kelly, you, you had a question?
Yeah, more of a comment and maybe something for our next meeting. I did have a friend and Nantucket voter express to me a vehicle for like ongoing dialogue and I think that email, that email starts to get to it, but maybe think about how that could be a little more public facing. Yeah, and just what that would look like. I don't, not something we need to come up in the moment, in this moment, but I'd like to give some time to it if we think that's valuable, a meeting or two.
Okay, I agree, I think we need to get the email account up and, up and open so that we can gather information that way. Anthony, can we talk about zoning?
Yes, and, and by the way, forgive me, I'm, I'm working on a new device, we got new devices. So I am just looking to make sure I can share the, the documents that I have. I, I'll just sort of start with sort of this big caveat around what was sent over. I would say our, our perspective is that, for the most part, the procedural, the process of amendments or change to the zoning ordinance are, they get placed in, in different bodies when you change your charter or change your form of government, but the process is still generally the same, governed by Chapter 48 of state law. So we don't consider zoning sort of a major component of the sort of charter process. It is impacted, but it's, but it's not sort of like, it's not something that gets substantially changed with, with changing your form of government. Having said that, there's a lot of concern about that in Nantucket and people want to get an understanding of how, of, you know, to the extent that there are any changes, what they would be. So we created a flow chart, it's not based on Nantucket zoning ordinance, it's based on Chapter 48, which is the procedure that applies to all municipalities across the state of when they want to receive changes to their, to their zoning ordinance. So I'm gonna pull it up and I'm gonna do one more caveat here, I promise this is the sort of last one, is that zoning is a very contentious and evolving issue across the state. So this is sort of just the broad outlines of sort of, just the sort of guaranteed places where all communities will hit. So I will pull up my version of the, of the chart.
Yes.
This says planning, this is all, all planning in the chart.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So at the top here, it talks about the submission of a article to change or amend the zoning or even to adopt the zoning. Again, this is all articulated in 48 and basically, I'm using city council here because I'm taking the language directly from the, the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, the zoning act, Chapter 48. But where it's a city council, town council would be the analogy here for Nantucket. It would be the same thing. Again, that we, as we explained, you know, way back when, the real distinguishing line between towns and other forms of government are the town meeting versus the legislative body being put in the, in the body of a council. So that's sort of where you'll see that distinction, it's articulated in, in Chapter 48. You have a separate document, because I felt like it would sort of just add too much language here that talks about the various entities that can submit, that can start this process, that can start here at the top of the, at the top of the chart. And I opened a Word document, can you guys see the, the Word document?
Yes.
Okay, and so, again, these are all spelled out in Chapter 48, sort of a number of entities that can sort of start the zoning process. And it can be confusing, so the select board or the city council or town council can start, can create their own petition and then, you know, I guess in some sense, a technical sense, submit it to themselves. Another interesting one that for the town, this is one actually that you're kind of losing, is that the town meeting can submit a zoning petition to the, to the, can create a zoning petition, which, because you won't, if you were to change governments, you wouldn't have a, a town meeting. And then the other interesting one is that by charter, you can sort of define other, other entities that have the power of submission. So that would be, you know, maybe you want another department to have it, maybe you want to allow the, right now, the 48 says that 10 people can submit one, maybe you want to allow for an individual or a smaller number of people. I think that might be permissible, I haven't seen any communities do that, but it allows some flexibility in terms of who can submit proposals to change the zoning. But then after the, after the submission happens, whether it's to a city or town council and a council from a government or the select board and a select board, a former government or town meeting from a government, they all go. meeting from a government, they all go to the, um, planning board. Um, there can be an asterisk right here by the, um, uh, by this fourteen days for submission to the planning board. Some communities, I don't think there are any, I, I don't think this is very common, but some communities don't have a select board in there, I'm sorry, don't have a planning board, and, um, some other body considers the, has that authority. So it's to whatever, it's to whatever, I don't mean the confusible, to whatever local body sits as the planning board or makes these planning decisions. They have, they have fourteen days to submit, then the planning board can, uh, can have sixty-five days from when it receives the petition to then conduct their public hearing on the item. Um, and then, um, once it's had its public hearing, one of two things can happen. Either the planning board submits its report and recommendations to, again, the appropriate body, or a, a twenty-one day, uh, time limit elapses, in which time the appropriate body can make, um, can make a decision on the zoning petition. Then we get into our distinction between city councils and towns again. Um, once you've either got the report or once the twenty-one days after the hearing have elapsed, the city council can conduct a meeting to, um, adopt or amend the, uh, petition. Um, in towns, the town meeting gets the petition. Gets, I'm sorry, gets the petition plus the report and recommendation from the planning board, and then the town meeting, that's the, you know, group of residents, uh, can vote to, you know, adopt or reject the, uh, proposal. Again, those two bodies have timeframes for the city council. They have ninety days to adopt or amend and adopt, uh, the proposal, or the town meeting has six months to adopt. Um, and you know, both bodies retain the, um, power even within the timelines to reject it. So if you don't, uh, act on the proposal within the timeline, it's automatically rejected, or you can vote to reject it, or you can vote to, to approve it. Before I sort of turn it back over to you guys for questions, I do just wanna point out that, um, the council meeting, um, is a public meeting while the, um, while town, town, um, residents aren't, aren't the legislative body and aren't voting on it. Um, I've seen, I don't think I've seen any, uh, communities that didn't sort of allow for a public discussion even at the city council. So that's a second public discussion. Aside from the planning board, will they have a discussion, or they allow, or they hear from the public about the proposal prior to, um, voting or acting on it. And I just, before I turn it back to you guys, I do wanna just, um, get Mel to chime in here. Um, former, uh, town manager on the town meeting, uh, piece of the, um, of the act for the, do you wanna add anything here about how the town meeting operates, uh, for adopting the zoning ordinance?
Uh, not really. Uh, I mean, you, you all know how it works. You, you, you adopt zoning all the time and amend your zoning, so it's, it's the same. I, I do wanna uh, uh, make one point, and, um, it won't appear anywhere in your charter, but, um, it's just a the nature of Massachusetts law that town governments have to have all their bylaws approved by the attorney general um, of the state. Um, city forms of government, which a council manager form of government would be considered, would not have that requirement. You know, there's, you know, there's people who would say it's good or bad. It's just the facts, and, um, whereas a town meeting form of government, when you change your zoning, you have to wait a while for the attorney general to, uh, approve it or deny it. Uh, sometimes they're, they ask for extensions. Uh, this would no longer happen in, in the, uh, council form of government. Once you adopt the zoning, uh, there's a period of time, but it's not very lengthy, uh, that it, it would go into effect. Just, just to, to make that point.
And, and to clarify, oh.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna add that. Yeah, to Mel's point. This one.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was, I was just gonna say, so Mel, what you're saying is, at, for the town side, after the approval, you've got an additional timeframe, whereas for the city side, approval is the end.
Correct.
Uh, I was just gonna ask that, um, on Anthony, on your chart there at the bottom where it says town meeting has six months to adopt, whereas the city slash town council has ninety days to adopt or amend. Is that the timeframe difference that Mel's talking about, or is Mel talking about additional time on top of these six months and ninety days?
Additional time.
Okay.
And that was, simplification of a, of a large process. If there are questions, feel free to, but we're not, I, I will put the cap, we're not here as zoning attorneys for the, for the committee. So with that caveat.
And, and I guess, well, my, my first question, so is this, um, this process, which looks like it's really operates pretty much the same, whether it's a town slash city, city council or open town meeting in terms of reviewing and, and getting approval for a zoning change, um, it, it operates the same whether it's, you know, an individual who wants to change the zoning on his, on his building, you know, on his, on the land that he owns, uh, or a developer who's trying to get, you know, a big tract of land rezoned, you know, um, say to smaller zoning or something, that the process is kind of the same, whether it's a big project or a little, or, you know, a little project.
Uh, yes, uh, generally, I would say, you know, this, this, um, sort of is at a very high level, so, you know, we put in sort of the requirements that are, that forty-eight requires, but you know, some communities, there's a negotiation. When I was the city clerk in, in Cambridge, there would be a number of meetings, um, at a subcommittee or, or with the city council or a subcommittee as they sort of negotiate what's right for the community. But it would follow this process and that would happen, and that all of these steps would happen. And then once it got to the city council, then they can have as many meetings as they want to within the ninety-day, uh, period to act on the proposal. Um, again, another sort of just, because the statute, uh, you know, the, our, chapter forty-eight is not, is not as sort of simple as I've laid it out here. The proponent has the ability to ask for extensions, and, and there's some other things here, but sort of at a high level, you'll go through all these steps before it can be approved or rejected.
Jill, sorry. Oh, sorry, Jill, go ahead.
Hi, um, so, Anthony, maybe you can answer this. It's a little more uh, detailed, but if someone goes to submit some sort of zoning change, this says they submit to the town council, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the way we're set up now is you would, most people submit that to the planning board through the plus office now. So would you still submit to the town council through the plus office? I mean, that's just the way we have it set up, or do they have their own is dedicated to this full-time, or maybe it's to the clerk or whoever, but.
Well, this is, I, I, I would say, so, um, again, I think another, I'll use the analogy of Cambridge just because it's the one I'm most familiar with, but, uh, in Cambridge, actually, and in Springfield, um, you would go to community development to sort of physically submit, but it's, but they're receiving it basically on behalf of the body that under the law is the one that's receiving. So it's basically, I'm assuming that the plus office is receiving it on behalf of the select board or that it, that it's sort of legally, it's got that legal authority. So I mean, uh, uh, the short answer is you can sort of operationally say, go to this office, go to that office, you know, assign whichever person, whether it's in the plus office to receive it on behalf of the city council, but it's still, they're just, they're just the person on the ground receiving it for the city council.
Okay. Yeah, okay, well, that's helpful. And then, just so I understand, and then I, I didn't hear you say, but it has to be two-thirds from the planning board and two-thirds from a city council?
So I specifically didn't put in the voting, um, uh, numbers, and I'll, I'll just tell you why. Um, so, uh, maybe it was two years ago, there was an amendment to the, um, zoning act, and it talks about different types of proposals and what the votes can be. This is basically, um, sort of around, um, making it, this is part of the push for more housing and affordable housing around the state.
Yeah, we had that here where some things are a majority and some things aren't, so I, I understand that.
So, so, also, the only thing I would say here is that, you know, depending on the proposal, the votes would stay the same whether you were in a town council form versus a, um, a town meeting form of government.
Gotcha. Yeah, the fair housing, not fair housing, no, they, it's like the Affordable Housing Act, but that actually greatly changed um, going from two-thirds to a majority on a number of our zoning proposals.
All right. Mel, you had a question or comment?
I, I wanted just to clarify that I don't believe the planning board, uh, requires a, uh, super majority when they are making recommendations.
Okay.
So, oh, so it, it might be, it'll be two-thirds of the, of the city count, of the town council or, um, town meeting, but not at the planning board level. That could be a majority vote. Simple majority.
Depending on what kind of zoning it is.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I specifically didn't talk about the voting requirements. I, when I was talking about the, the two-thirds of the, or the, um, majority, I'm talking at the city council or town meeting level. Um, but again, like I said, it's, it's changed in recent years, um, uh, because of, um, you know, the, the housing crisis that we're in or the response to that crisis.
Any other thoughts, comments? I mean.
So, and just to clarify, Anthony, you're referring to the housing crisis in Massachusetts.
Well, yeah, I, again, I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm not being, I'm just, I know that the, the, the statute has been modified recently to, in, in my estimation, make a little bit more complicated because there are a lot of conditions or, or, you know, um, that you hit that will, um, trigger certain voting requirements for the approval of a, um, of a zoning ordinance. So, I, I think it's really beyond the scope of what we're doing here, so I didn't put them in, but your charter wouldn't change those. Those are under the, the state statute.
Right.
And so, so it strikes me then, if we got a question about zoning at one of our two public forums, uh, our answer can be, you know, I don't think any of us wanna get into the weeds or, or are expert enough to get into the weeds, but, you know, or we can certainly answer that our understanding is that the process for submitting a zoning change by whatever authorized person to, um, to, to submit a, a zoning change follows pretty much the same path under town council, uh, structure as it does under open town meeting. Some of the, the timeframes are a little different, but ultimately the same bodies of the planning board, the, uh, the town, the, the legislature for the, for the community, city council, town council, or open town meeting, uh, fulfill the same roles and, uh, there really shouldn't, I, I don't know what, what, what else someone might ask about, but, um, it follows that sort of same path. So I would put, not terribly articulate, but I think that's kind of our answer. Jill?
Yeah, if you all wanna see an example, if you just look through the warrant, the one we just had, you can see where it says this only requires a majority vote, and that's in the motion from the planning board. And then you can tell which one was two-thirds, and what, like sewer was two-thirds and developments side was only a majority. But it says that. Just to give you an idea of the difference.
And I, I was just, I guess my concern was that people are, may think that under town council, this, you know, this thing, this process for zoning change is gonna change dramatically, and it sounds to me that it does not, that it follows the same path with possibly some different timeframes at each step, but other than that, it operates the same.
When, and another way you could say that is to say that some of the executive function that the select board had is being retained by the town council. And that's exactly what's going on.
Like what? I don't know what you mean, sorry, Bo.
Well, submission to the board is just gonna be submission to the city council, and then they're gonna retain.
What? They don't do that now, not for zoning.
Submission of board, of the board to the support of selectmen or the select board is gonna be the executive function there, and then the sending it to the planning board is that's the executive function, and then the legislative function down below is the approval where town meeting would be. So I mean, I, I agree with Joe, it's really nothing different other than uh, combining a little bit of his executive function.
Okay, guys, I mean, I, I hear you, but you, you, you do realize it, it isn't, it, it is totally different because we're, it's taking the, the people out of the equation. I mean, I just wouldn't equate that quite like that, that's all I mean. But the process of submitting paperwork is a little, little different. It's probably not gonna seem so different.
I, I assume the paperwork is gonna be submitted to plus, just like it is uh, under, if we were converted, if Nantucket went to town council, that this chart would work exactly the same. I mean, the paperwork would go to the plus department on, you know, which would receive the paperwork on behalf of the town council. I mean, um, and then it kind of follows the, follows the path down, and ultimately the town council gets it back and makes a final decision, um, which is, the difference there being, you know, you, that may happen quickly as opposed to having to wait for a town meeting.
Oh, quickly and with less people making the decision, um, something that our, our community gets really into. So I, I do think we.
No, well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct. Less people, meaning, I mean, will three hundred people at town meeting have, have a say over this? No, the town council will have the say over.
Well, not necessarily, because they could show up to the meeting, those three hundred people could show up to the meeting and debate with the board. So, I mean, the legislative function.
Ultimately.
The, the board ultimately will vote. But it'll be a vote with plenty of debate and so forth. Um, that's the difference between that. It's just that the town meeting function, the legislative function moves over to the city council, which is what we knew all along.
Hmm, this also suggests, Anthony, if I understand that it can be rejected by them doing nothing, I mean, they have to, uh, planning board has to hold a hearing. I can't go down on the chart any more, and, um, they can adopt or amend, but you were saying if they don't do anything, then it's rejected.
Correct.
Are they required to have a hearing on this?
Wh- which they are, we, are we talking about?
At town council, are they required to have a hearing?
Yes, so, so right here, it's a city council, again, I choose the words from the, from the forty-eight, but you can think here town council. So the town council must have a meeting to adopt or amend within ninety days of receiving the report from the planning board, or if they don't receive a report from the planning board within twenty-one days, um, then that's when their clocks, clock starts running.
Gotcha, okay.
All right.
Also, just.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, like we had two meetings ago, when a member of the public said something about the change, and we were trying to offer that it won't feel like that much of a change, and we got the feedback that that didn't, it didn't feel so good. I think that where there are definite distinct changes, like Jill is pointing out, that it would be more important for us to allow that that is true, um, rather than to risk appearing cavalier when there is a clear difference, because I don't, I don't think that's gonna, I don't think that helps our, it's not good for how we're proceeding.
I, I, I think you're right, Caroline, but I, I think when you break it down is to, to kind of go through the steps, right? It's you're gonna submit the paperwork kind of in a similar fashion and go through a planning board review that's available for the public to participate in, just like that. It's the same process and procedure, and then after it leaves that step, it's going to go to an additional public debate. The proposal is to the town council for that public debate as opposed to town meeting. That debate can still get had. And the real large change in this is at the end of that debate, there will be nine people that raise their hand and cast a vote, as opposed to however many people are in that town meeting. But the debate processes are still open and available, just the same. Just at the end, instead of a room of eight hundred voting one way or another, it'll be nine.
And are those.
That's a big difference, Jeff. That's my point. It, like, I totally agree, and I, the process, I understand, and it's this is a very respectable process, and I think it's good and open to the public. I just, I agree with Caroline. I would be careful suggesting that it's the same thing.
Can I ask it not to be adversarial? How do you message that in a way that somehow?
Embrace that it's different. It's okay.
No, no, I'm saying that it is different. I'm not saying that I'm not, but what I'm hearing in feedback is that that change is so huge that we need some way to assuage those concerns that that huge change is okay.
How about Jill's?
I'm not saying that at all. I, I'm just, I'm suggesting that this will be the thing that will probably confuse, surprise people the most, right? I mean, they probably haven't thought about it that way. They don't, at first, it probably sounds like, oh, yeah, town council's like select board is just bigger. But, uh, when you get to this piece, then you know, it gets a little more personal for some people, not, not for everybody.
Well, and, and we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to convince everybody. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's sort of a reality here, too, right? I mean, I, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't look at this that the, you know, the five hundred people that are. I I just, I don't, I don't, I don't look at this that the, you know, the five hundred people that are. Fanatics about town meeting, I don't think you're gonna get them all to change their minds, um and they they're gonna recognize that. You know, nine people elected by twenty five hundred voters are gonna be making the decision as opposed to. Four hundred or seven hundred or however many are in the room at town meeting, and that's that's fundamentally kind of what we're talking about here, right, so. Sorry.
I agree. And the reason I agree is that you should never say, and we should not say it because it's not true. That we are trying to limit participation. That's just not the message, and it's because it's not true. Right? Sort of counterintuitively. In this system, the way I see it is if you're gonna limit a vote. By the populace. In town meeting. Then you're gonna try harder. To go and participate in other ways. And that's. What I see happening. And you, if if we're gonna, like Jeff says, we're gonna have the debate part regardless. You're not limiting participation. You're saying. Go and participate. These people ultimately accountable to you, the voter.
And Bo, how do you see that as being a better selling point? Or a better um a better way of it working for the voters that will be asked to turn this from. Town meeting into town council. For the advantages.
Because the people that you vote for. That you pay. That you have contractual relationship with. Are going to have to be more focused. And more involved in issues. And they're gonna be more ensconced in the operations. And that hopefully, the people that you. Put there are gonna be. Better. Okay, so you you have to have that faith. In this. System for it to work. Because that's what you're asking. Gonna be there, I'm sorry, as Jeff said, you're gonna have the debate. Whichever forum, you're gonna have tons of debate.
Right, I mean, there's there's, I'm sorry, Jill, go ahead, your hand up.
Oh, no, I mean, I I I totally understand that, although, Bo, you again, you confused me a little bit, because you just said you think the town council is gonna be better than the select board. What you mean, the people that get elected?
I'm gonna say that you're gonna hold them to a different standard. Okay, and that part. Because this functions like a corporation. More like, I mean, than than it currently does. Then you will hold these people more accountable, and you I think that's true. I think that's the one. Um big difference of this system or the other system, a system of volunteers. Will most likely. Skirt. Real responsibility, because real responsibility sort of rests with. The town meeting. The legislative bodies. Right now, and it's not going to. In the same way with the town council. It's gonna rest with. People who we. Suppose are serious. To come do the job. And you're gonna say to them. We pay you, do the job. That's my point.
Well, but what I hear you all saying, and I'm just giving you feedback, because I I think like a voter, that's all I think like, I don't. What I. Think I hear you say is that the people who are on the select board now, like, we. What you've been, what we've been saying as a committee is like, oh, it's not that different, it's not that different. But I I think. What you're pivoting to is, no, it is going to be different. And this is why, and I that's what I want to get you all to personally, at least to say, no, that it is different. And you you your participation. Opportunities will grow, but you know, just like Suzanne Gerardi said two weeks ago, which Caroline alluded to, I mean. She's like, yeah, but but I I don't always want to speak up, but I still have a vote. So I think we just need to embrace that as a committee and accept that. And. Um, yeah, that's why I'm pointing out, and maybe that'll come out on Saturday, and you can see that bifurcation.
Well, no, I think it'll be interesting on Saturday to see what. Sort of what cross section of the island shows up, hopefully, it'll be a reasonable number of people, and. Whether people are more concerned about. You know. Saving time, being more efficient, and brought frankly, broadening the number of people that vote to elect, you know. You 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 are broadening the participation in the sense that you you're looking to have these people elected by. X thousand or whatever our our average voting turnout is at elections. So there's certainly more people will be voting to elect these representatives, these town councillors.
Why do you say that? Sorry. But why do you say people will turn out to vote for town council? It is there some?
Because I think there are many thousands of people on this island who find town council. Um, I'm sorry, I'm 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 speaking, misspeaking, define open town meeting to be, you know. Slow, a waste of time, don't have time to go. Um, and they think the efficiency is worth it, whereas where there are clearly hundreds of people. Who think town meeting is just marvelous and don't want it to go away um.
But do you think voter turnout is gonna get higher at the municipal level? That's what I thought you just said.
It might, I mean, you know, I mean, we've probably averaged two to three thousand people at each municipal election for the ten years, eleven years that I've been around. So that's that's certainly more people, more people voting for nine town councillors than tend to vote at any open town meeting.
Sorry, I thought what you were saying is we're gonna get more than that.
Well, that would be great, I'm not, I'm not prepared to be that optimistic, so. Anyway.
That that's what I thought you were saying.
I don't know, we've been beating this one to death. Um.
Don't get too crazy.
Okay, just well, you guys are all happy, that's fine, I'm good, I'm good, um. Any other thoughts or? Obviously, we'll get some more more input on Saturday, you would see what uh. What people, who shows up and what their reactions are. Um with that. Anthony, or or the column, is the column center prepared to have a chat about uh? Whatever, then I don't, I'm not even sure which section we're on in terms of the charter, so I turn it over to you.
Section five.
Yeah, so we're still on the administrative, um and when we. I think we, so we were expecting, maybe not expecting, but I think we had some discussion about having Libby or someone else from the administration come. Uh because there are some uh unique to Nantucket, some unique departments, the um airport and some others. Uh that we're hoping to get a little bit more information about. Um before the committee makes a decision, uh but what I can do is I'll I'll turn it over to Mel, I'll put his memo on the screen. And Mel, maybe you can take us through and sort of um. You know, uh get people thinking about what they should be asking.
Sure, I'm 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 sorry, Mel, on the on the Libby Gibson thing, well, Jeff and I will will circle back and, you know. See if we'd get her at the next next meeting or two, so. The next meeting or the meeting after that's what I meant to say.
Are you at the next meeting?
Of this of this group, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, I I think you, we've talked about a draft of this memo previously, and what what we've done here is we've identified that in Nantucket. Uh there are certain uh departments or agencies um that are not under the control of town administrator, town manager. And and it's referred to as town administration, and there's an actual um. Definition in the in the in the statute, in the charter and current charter that says. That excluded from town administration are the airport, the parking recreation, school and water departments. Uh now, school department is very typical to be separate, and in all of our charters and in Massachusetts law. Uh we uh distinguish the school department and their management administrative prerogatives. Uh that are separate and independent from the town. Uh administration. Um, I guess the question is, really, for the commit committee is, you know, do you want to continue to have those exclusions? Um, you know, why are they there and are they still relevant? Um, and even if you want to keep them, uh my guess is that there are some. Procedures in place. Um currently between the town manager and the airport or parking recreation that are probably not written down anywhere. They probably exist in terms of cooperation and coordination. Uh maybe it's in personnel, maybe it's in budget. Uh you know, and our our goal is to try to tease those out, and that's where Libby and her staff would come in and try to help us with that, and then. Uh the Collins would try to write it down and and make sure that it's clear. What are the relationships between uh all town departments and agencies and the administration? Um, we're probably not going to define the departments um any longer, they're they're defined. The ones that are in, we we usually don't like to do that, we like to just talk talk about those that are out. So in a standard town. Manager council form of government, the town manager really is in charge of most departments other than the school department. Uh and so what we're talking about here is are there gonna be uh continue to be exceptions in Nantucket, and if so, how are they gonna work?
And why?
And why do they, why do they, why are there sections?
I mean, you know, I guess my my reaction is, as we have for many of these decisions, um. Trying to keep things as similar to the way they are today under open town meeting would be my preference, uh unless unless there's some. Strong reason we have to change, but the airport, I would think, would stay separate, and I think the um. Is the other ones? Is actually under administration, as I I think that may be old language.
They're within DPW now, the visiting function, the. Commission itself is.
But the town manager appoints that commission.
Yeah. And then the the water, the board of the water committee Curtis is elected, right?
It's elected, correct, and that was because it was a private company. That was purchased by the town, and it's an enterprise fund.
It's created by a special act of the legislature, so the terms of the uh. The way it works is all in the general in the special act.
But I still remind you that there has been discussion about water and a sewer commission combined. Because all of your bills are water sewer. They all come from the same source, and so. I'm not pushing it, I'm just saying there was. The sewer commission is gonna disappear if the select board disappears, so you're gonna have to figure out what to do about sewer. In the process.
Yeah, that that that's a good point, uh Curtis said, that wasn't specifically mentioned in in the in the memo, but. I mean, these are the kind of things we want to hear from the from the town manager about and. Uh how it really works, and um and to the extent that we can, we would try to explain it in the charter. We're not suggesting that you have to uh merge these depart these independent departments into. Uh into administration, uh it's really up to you. I think what we want to make sure, though, is that if they do remain independent. That there's there's clarity around, um you know, who appoints the department head and. You know, what about department, what about employees, what about contracts, what about? Uh all those things that the town manager is normally responsible for in all of the departments. So we're, we gave Libya a copy of this memo, and uh, you know, we assume that she'll, you know, be prepared at some point to uh talk. Talk with the committee about it.
Uh, but we'll look back and.
Did you ask?
I I didn't. I I said no stuff, I just didn't take back from here, so we'll follow up.
Joe?
Yes.
This is an email I just got on my phone, it's funny. I just got an email that the water depart, the water commissioners need to sign five contracts. Um, that have just been. Um, it just came while we're having this meeting.
All right. In other words, as far as the discussion about section five, uh section five and these issues about other town departments. Really can't progress without Libby part of the conversation at this at this point.
Yeah, it it's it's possible that some of the stuff will all be in five, it could be go back, you know, some to other sections that we've already. Develop, but you're right, we we can't ad- adopt a full charter without understanding the relationship. Um of these departments and, uh you know, in terms of their administrative uh authority.
Okay, well, we'll work on getting her. Um to participate hopefully in the next meeting, uh if if if, well, preferably the next meeting, but if. Worst comes to worst, the one after that. Um.
I remind you, in this memo, there's also mention of the town clerk. And the ethneum, I don't know whether they're part of A or. But they're in this memo.
I think, I think, isn't the ethneum a separate legal entity? I don't think it's part of the town at all. Um, and then um. I'm sorry.
Electing the town clerk now independently, I don't see why that.
I I I as 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 the last one who tried to get the town clerk. Uh when dark, I'm not Dorothy Stover, when the. I'm picking up the first.
Yeah.
Catherine Stover was the town clerk, I tried to get. Um, the town clerk made a department under the. Under Libby's. Um.
You got burdened on that.
I got blown up. I that was my first first test and um trying to get a vote, so anyway, all right, um. You know, I'm I'm sort of, uh, I think we're a little low on on things to talk about, um. I did wanna, just one administrative thing I can I can bring up to the group, um. Well, before I bring that up, Anthony. Can you, do you know how many, in terms of where we are in this, you know, charter development? Then ultimately, we have to do do something about the county charter. Um. How many weeks do you think we need to to cover what's left on the um? On the plan?
Well, you know, I I so. Yeah, I usually have the work plan right in front of me, I just can't find it on this new device, but um the work plan had us concluding in in early January.
All right, well, I I went through the count today, happened to be just a, just on an administrative note, today happened to be the last meeting that the town had set up. A room and a Zoom account for us to use. Um. Like if I can, the the next seven or eight Wednesdays, every other Wednesdays would be October sixteenth, October thirtieth. November thirteenth. November twenty seventh, I I'll start again, so, October sixteenth, Oc- October thirtieth. November thirteenth, November twenty seven. December eleven. And then Christmas and New Year's are the are 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 sort of the. Would fall on. The two week gap and then a one week to New Year's. And then I, and then I. Wrote down January eighth and January twenty second. I think I did that right.
You've had a previous outline of dates, is is that consistent?
Well, no, this is, I literally just did this today because I have, I want to go back to the town and say, okay, we need the meeting for, hang on a second, Donna. Uh, we need, you know, we need to get a room and and a Zoom account to hold our meeting, so um to those. Anyway, I'm sorry, Donna, you you got a question?
I I um along with that, I was curious about our timeline, how are things working out with getting everything into um? So that we have the warrants uh submitted properly and KP is, you know, will review what we've done and that sort of thing that. We've talked about.
Well, I I had a pretty good, as I think the handful of people may already know, I had a pretty good meeting with the select board about two weeks ago. Um, I would say we have, we have sort of a three out of the five select board members would support us. Uh in terms of making it a a select board uh warrant article. Uh so that I think we do have a little leeway in terms of when we have to finish our work by. Um, but that also, but then that raises another question, is do we really want to, do we really, really want to have our article? On the regular town meeting to compete with all sorts of other articles, or. Is there some benefit to going to special time meeting route? Um and being sort of the only major article on. That agenda, I'm I'm sure that's, there are more. Issues to trying to set up a special time meeting for once, one article or. Part of article.
It would be twenty articles.
Right, other people will. But I I I guess I do feel like there is, there's some attraction, at least to me, um. To go to special time meeting grid, so. Joe?
Sorry, Joe, maybe I missed that, I. You got the idea from three select board members that they'd be willing to sponsor an article?
We had a conversation, we had, we had a conversation at at the select board meeting, um I went through our, where we've sort of gone to. And I, right, and I asked them, you know, whether they would support us in in terms of submitting a select board article as opposed to a citizens article. Given the difference in submission dates and. again, I don't want to sit there and say it's an absolute, but I my impression in terms of the comments of the five select board members, but three of them would support us. Tom, not being one of them, but
Tom abstained.
Yeah, he abstained, but you know. So I think there is a fairly good chance that they would support us and have it on the the annual town meeting warrant. On the other hand, we discussed, I think, at our last meeting that for two hundred signatures and probably more work than I'm aware of. There's the possibility of going a special time meeting route, which has some appeal to me because we wouldn't be competing with other lots and lots of articles. And certainly the three, two or three big articles that are that are planned for the May two twenty twenty five annual time meeting. The biggest of which is our Ellen Hall. So.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just I didn't hear three select board members say they'd sponsor an article. So I I didn't hear that, but everybody can watch it and interpret it the way they want. What I heard is them say we I personally think we need to issue a report to them. And I also heard them say that they don't want to keep this going forever in terms of funding if you know, they don't have some feedback from the public. That's what I heard. So I thought that it came out that it would be considered a, I think it was Dr. I'm blanking on his name. McNabb. It's like I went to high school somebody last night that he even said maybe sense of the meeting or having some kind of vote on the town meeting warrant? I mean, that's what I heard them say. Am I?
Well, I I I heard Malcolm, Dawn and Brooke say that they would support a select aside, I'm sorry, we would support a an article from the select board. And Tom and Matt were kind of less committal. That we there was a lot of that this sort of I guess devolved into a into the idea of a sense of the meeting vote, which personally I don't think is such a great idea. But
Are you sure? Yeah, did?
Well, because I I I I'll just a little sorry to interrupt, but I think the sense of a meeting vote would be a waste of a lot of effort to try to get enough voters to show up the beating to sway the vote in favor of town council. I mean, I I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't think we can do, we can win this vote at at town meeting by simply convincing the five hundred people that love town meeting, open that love town meeting, that they ought to switch their vote to town council. I think we need other voters to show up or else we're going to lose.
Then then I think that goes against what you're saying about the special town meeting. Then 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 you're I don't think you're getting you're getting fewer people at that. If you want to go for the most people, if that's kind of your plan, I'm just.
Okay, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I I think we do have to, you know, if we're going to get X X number of people to show up who are not regular attendees at town meeting to have those voters in the room. I think it's it's gonna it's gonna take a lot of PR and a lot of effort. I don't want to do that for a sense of the meeting vote. I would want to do that for a vote on the article.
Yeah, but I heard Brooke say that she wasn't interested in moving forward unless they had some feedback from the public, which these two information sessions should be helpful.
I didn't hear that.
Okay, well, everyone might might want to watch it, but that's what I heard. That, you know, maybe they could gauge public reaction before it got too much further, but I don't know, maybe maybe someone else watched it too.
Well. My concern is that if it goes on the regular annual town meeting, it'll come up on the third night. And he will, there'll be three or four hundred people left. I think if we had a special town meeting, it would attract people who feel that this is a major important decision to make. And I wouldn't want to be buried on the third night of annual town meeting. So I
That depends who sponsors it. Right? If the select board sponsored it, it's not going to be on the third night. It's going to be sooner. If it's a citizens warrant, it'll be on the third night.
Maybe I I I still kind of agree with Tom, right? I I have some personal reservations about the select board. Who's the sitting executive branch of government sponsoring an article to fundamentally change the other branch of government?
Yeah.
And I think if if people want a town council, at least in my head, going out and getting people to sign up for let's have a special town meeting, using that opportunity to educate people about what's going on and collecting some signatures to call it builds momentum in in the public, more so than the select board sponsoring the article. Yeah, I also think it puts the five of them in a super awkward spot to to say sponsor an article to potentially change the legislative branch of government.
Donna? Donna, go ahead.
Yeah. I think that is a very good idea, special town meeting. That doesn't anybody who's against it is going to come there too. If people are against a special town meeting, I mean, a town council, they're going to want to voice their opinion at a special town meeting that we are going to.
That's true. That's true. We just have to get more people.
But you get more support. Anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I I I hate to disagree with you, but I your your characterization of what happened at select word, I I think is a little bit different than mine. I think what the select board was saying was that it would take significant legal time with KP law for them to make sure that the charter was in keeping with it being in a form that was suitable for the legislature. And that for the select board to support that type of agreement and direction towards town council to to expend those resources would require more a a further further evidence that 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 this is something that the town, the voters want. And that's when we discussed a potential sense of the meeting. And then I'm not taking credit for it because Rachel actually brought it up in our last meeting, our Rachel here. That there could be a non binding ballot measure. So I I think that everybody was somewhat open to, I mean, Jeff stated my my position or whatever e- exactly. But but I thought that that conversation was fluid based on you coming back to the committee discussing it with us and then discussing it with the rest of the committee and then seeing how to move forward on on all the things that all the boxes that would need would need to be checked.
Okay, well, then I guess I misinterpreted what some of the folks said. I I didn't, to be honest, Tom, I didn't feel at the end of the, you know, my time at the select board that I would been given the or asked to to come back to them with a, you know, more detailed report. I mean, I certainly expect that we're going to write a report and have a charter, a town charter and a I guess a county charter, you know, to to give to KP Law and to give to the gift at the select board. But based on, you know, the way you described the situation. I'm sort of changing direction here, but it sounds like, you know, making annual time meeting is sort of impossible. You know, where there's no way we're going to get done, you know, working on a charter before December or January. You know, if your interpretation is select word at that point, probably would not support an article for, you know, for this, for the change to town council. You know, what what do we got? We're going to, you know, we we either have to go with a special time meeting or wait till twenty twenty six.
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't know whether we'd support or not, like those these are I don't mean to be cagey or whatever, but these are hypotheticals. I mean, it really just depends on on when the timeframe was and what what the ask was and what kind of resources KP Law would have to put into it because we have we have annual town meeting, there's a system warrant articles, there's ongoing things that that we have with town council. I I just I just don't know. I I all I can say is my take of what we talked about at when you came to us two two weeks ago.
No, fair, I mean, fair enough, fair enough. And I'm just, what I just said, though, is if that's the case, and, you know, and I and I was more optimistic about some of the comments that your colleagues made, then then I think we're behind a sort of in a tough spot. It goes, I don't I don't see how we make annual time meeting. Hang on a second, Donna. Oh, Donna, and then and then Joe.
Well, I did not attend that meeting, the the board meeting, but could we have some clarification about the the checked boxes and items that we need to meet in order to be prepared for either a special town meeting or or annual town meeting? I I'm vague on on what the select board is expecting of us at this point. And therefore, how to move forward.
I don't know. I don't know what to say to that.
Well, KP Law question is a critical question.
Public momentum. Voting momentum is the biggest one I heard.
The the biggest thing I heard was that they need some feedback. So I'm from us and then from the public. And I I would suggest that we actually get a report and attach a charter for review. I think that's right, Joe. And I would, if we don't think they're going to support or back a warrant article or I don't think you need to worry about the timing if you want to do a citizens warrant article, but if we need them to pay for KP Law to work on this. I am not positive. I personally heard them say they would do that right away. They they wanted more public feedback is what I heard. And so I would encourage, if if that's the case, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's the case, then I would encourage a ballot question. I think that was a great idea Rachel had. And that is the number of voters that you were kind of looking for that I think that we all felt was a little more representative than town meeting. I think that's a positive thing personally.
Okay. I mean, Rachel, go ahead. You're really quiet, Rachel.
Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I had to just, there was a lot going on behind me, so I was trying to change with headphones and didn't switch it back. Um, I I I'm sort of going to take a middle line on this. I I do like the sense of the meeting, the ballot type of avenue, whichever way they is, but I do sort of agree with Joe, there's not enough out there yet. And so I think by the article, by my own view on this, by Curtis's article passing at town meeting that sort of developed this group, that was enough support that we're pushing forward. But if now we're looking at a more or another step, I think we need far more public outreach than these two sessions in October before we throw something to the public to say, what do you think about this or not? There's just not enough out there right now. There's nothing for them to look at. There's nothing for them to really mull over. It's just a their own interpreted concept. And I'm not sure that's the best way to get information back from a sense of the meeting. So I I see both points, but I I I think those type of ballot or questions at town meeting have value in of themselves. But it's when you're presenting it for something like this. This is a lot bigger than just hey, what do you think? This is a lot to process. And if you notice what we're doing, I mean, how many meetings have we had and how much have we gotten through? You can't expect the public to get a general question like that and say, yeah, this is a good idea. It's not. I just, that's just my thought. Not everybody's going to read whatever you put out there or participate either. So you're not going to get completely informed voters. That's just the democratic process, but I just think we're too early to do that. That makes sense.
Okay. All right, I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure what Donna. Donna, you ready?
Regarding KP Law, couldn't they provide some sort of a cost estimate as to what it might take to do a quick review or something? Because there again, we don't know. So we can't provide to the select board what it's going to cost.
Well, that's, you know, Donna, that's really internal to the select board and KP. I mean, they're John Georgios is it shows up at every select board meeting. They they I I don't know. I don't think there's much value in asking them for an estimate, whatever the I mean, John did say at the meeting that, you know, any any review of the charters, the town charter and the camp and the county charter would require sort of out of base fees expense to the town. I mean, I guess what I'm sort of it's sort of, I I find a sort of a catch twenty two is the message, and I don't I don't mean to, Tom, I'm sort of addressing this to you and that. You know. But, you know, for the select board to come back and say, well, you know, if you had a sense of the meeting vote, then we'd know better whether we want to spend the money on reviewing the charter. I mean, it's it's kind of I just I just think it's sort of too, you know. I'm not even trying, I'm not even sure what I'm trying to say. So I'm kind of upset.
So I I think if I may, just to kind of split the middle at the moment. Let's get through our two public information sessions, see what people have to say, right? If there are a hundred people that show up on Saturday and say thank you all for proposing. This is the greatest thing we've ever heard. That's a different take. It's a hundred people that are like, this is the worst idea I've ever heard. Let's talk about it. It's right. We 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 don't know. We haven't had those sessions yet. I think that'll be kind of telling for where people in the community even are, how many people come, how many people interact. We'll give a little bit of a clue more than what our little bubble is before we fully commit to however, we're going to try to put this forward. I think we need to at least and to see where we are.
I I agree. I let's get the sessions under our belt and then stay focused.
All righty, Jules are here. Yeah, Joe.
I was just gonna say, I mean, in Curtis's article, it it says to to re to do a report, to do a study, yeah? So I think we always were planning to do a report anyway, right? I mean, that's a good goal for us as well as to have a significant report we can be proud of. I mean, I I think that's a good thing. And
Right.
That gives Joe some time to go back to them with even more details and, you know, maybe there are some other people like we met with everybody before we looked at what the changes were. Maybe we could take some time to meet with these same people after they've seen what the changes will be. And get feedback from them as well. You know, people from the various boards kind of like what we did beforehand. So I think it'd be good process to get the word out and I think it's a positive, actually. We we knew it wasn't gonna go super quick. I don't think, or I I didn't think it would go super quick, but as exciting as that sounds.
All right. Well, why don't we, let's see what happens on Saturday and Thursday with the two public forums, see what sort of feedback we get, how many people show up. And then when we get together again on the, I think it's the sixteenth, we'll have something something to chew on. So. Any other subjects that people want to bring up? Oh, sorry, Anthony, you first and then Donna.
I'm going to say this in Pat, feel free to jump in and stop me, but we did, we were gonna based on some of the feedback and it's maybe helpful for your for your public community. So there's a lot of concern basically, we heard about how do people engage? How does the public engage with the town council if it is if it is adopted? So we were planning to go into that for the next meeting, but we can do a little preview here of some of the topics at a high level as you prepare for your public input session.
Donna?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that obviously I'll be on Zoom, but we also have a non voting taxpayer meeting at ten o'clock, so I'll jump in and out on Zoom. I'll be I'll be with you in spirit. So I'll jump in and out on Zoom. I'll be, I'll be with you in spirit.
Uh, Anthony, I'm sorry, did you want to go over that stuff now? I, I, I'm sorry, I, I jumped it down and then realized you, you probably wanted to talk about that, so.
If, if, you know, you got half an hour, so if the committee wants to, I think we, I think we can do sort of a, sort of quick overview of, of some of these topics that we talked about, about. And again, a lot of this is really à la carte. You guys are gonna have the power to decide how much input the, um. The public will have at sort of different phases of the council's decision-making, obviously with us. Hopefully brighten some guidelines or, or rail, guide rails around like where the, what the impacts could be, certainly.
Donna, I'm sorry, Caroline.
Um, I'm just thinking about Donna mentioning the scheduling conflict with the non-voting taxpayers. Is there a possibility of you inviting them to attend our public meetings since, you know, this is the opportunity that they have been asking for? To, to participate in the possibility of changing the government?
I will be very happy to. I'll send something off to Peter Hallie this, uh, after we finish. That's a great idea. Thank you, Caroline.
In the Zoom link.
Yeah, no, that's, well, the Zoom link's on the meeting posting, so, um, they could certainly do that. That'd be great. Anthony, you wanna chat about, um. The, um, public, public access, that, that little, the, the, the grid that, uh, and thank you Patricia for sending that, uh, to me today, so.
Pat, unless I put you on the spot, go ahead, yeah.
No, absolutely. I'm going to see if I can pull this up. Um. And tell me if you see a grid on the screen. Okay, first of all, um, Joe, I went inside of the grid I gave you, um, I've, um, has an error in it, so I will resend it so that you can.
Okay.
Have the right one.
Do we have this?
I, you don't have it yet. Um, it's something we went over in the beginning when you were making a determination and considering all forms of government. Um, so following, um, today, because, um, we would like to spend more time on this at the next meeting. Um, I will give you this grid. I will give you, um, a chart which talks a little bit about what other communities do. And, um, I will give you some draft language that we can go through, so we can, um, and you'll have that before then. You know, I'll try to get that well in advance at the next meeting, so you can take a look at it.
I don't wanna get an hour before the meeting like other stuff's been coming.
This, this was specifically, uh, uh, I'm at my request this morning. So, because.
But I, I mean, they're just sending this stuff out a week or. A few days in advance, so we have it. When they, when this next phase, please.
Sure, that, that would be easier to do with this because we have some prepared materials that we can send to you. Um, so, um, I, I think that you'll have, you know, we'll get this to you as soon as we can. Um, so I wanted to go through and talk a little bit about, um, what we have here. We have four options. Um, for what we would use to build what we would call a resident participation article. Um, there's a fifth that we'll talk about more and that is recall. Um, but we'll go, I want to just go through and introduce you to these concepts. Um, but in each of these concepts, there will be a lot of decisions for you to make. For example, how many signatures will you require? Do you want this at all? Um, and we can go through and talk about it. Um, the first, it, when we used this chart last time, it was to compare what was available under open town meeting. Um, representative town meeting and a council manager or mayor. So, um, that's probably old language in there and we'll just. Make a council manager. Um. So the first thing I want to talk about is what I'm gonna call free petition. Free petition, um, is a situation under which you can say a certain number of voter signatures are collected. And that allows, um, so residents, um, to present a measure to the town council for a hearing. Um, usually it's fifty to a hundred and fifty signatures. Um, and this does not mean that town council has to have, you know, make a, make a decision or enact something in a certain way, pass something. Um, this just is a mechanism. Um, and, and to be honest, most council managers will have, you know, old and new business and other ways to bring up a topic. However, um, if there's something people feel very strongly about and don't feel that it's getting the attention it needs at town council. Um, you can establish a free petition role and then we'll talk about how many signatures would be required to put something before town council. Um, and that's fairly, and, and that's a fairly basic process. Um, because no actual decision is being made. So that's one option we'll talk about. Um, another option, uh, what is comparable to what you have now? Which is a citizen petition. Um, under citizen petition, uh, as we talked about, voters collect signatures to put items on the warrant. Um. For a special town meeting, it's two hundred. I think on the first slide it was, we, we said one hundred and that's incorrect. Um, or ten voters, this is just your general means of getting something before the legislature for a vote. Um, however, in the council manager form, it's a little different. Um, what, what you would do is choose a threshold number of voters who sign a petition to ask the council to take a specific action. Um, let's say, um. Uh, I, I don't even want to give an example because we'll get distracted by the example and not the action. But, um, let's just say, uh, we'll just say require the council to put up a stop sign. Um, and so, you know, if a hundred people. Retri, sign this petition to ask the council, um, to take a specific action, putting up a stop sign. Um, it goes, it, the council must hear it. The council will either decide yes or no. If the town council decides yes, great, everyone's happy. If they decide no, then the subject has to appear on the ballot. And then there will be another stage where there's, there are different stages for this. Um. But you may need additional signatures to, um, actually get the matter on the ballot. Uh, the, there's a step by which town council will take a look at it, make sure it's actually a legal. Um, it's a legal petition. Um, so that's another avenue. That we will talk about, that you can make a choice to include in the charter, um, to allow residents to bring ballot. Essentially, it's to bring the ballot question. The next that we will talk about is a referendum. Now, where a resident initiative brings, um, a new idea to the town council. The referendum is generally a request to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down by ballot. In order to, um, in order to. You know, overturn something that the town council has proposed. Um, so you will, we'll talk about the various stages and the steps for this, but you will talk, you can decide whether you want to include this referendum petition. Um, whether you would like to, um. You know, what threat the signature threshold is. Um, and for all of these, we're gonna talk about what number of people have to actually vote for this to go forward. So say, for example, um, you know, there, there are some thresholds for voting, so if something goes to the ballot. You know, it may get eighty percent of the votes, but only ten people showed up that day. So you may choose to have a threshold number of voters before an action can take place. Um, one of, one of the last ones I want to talk a, a bit about, and I know that, um, you mentioned Barnstable as. As, um, an example of this. And that is an open meeting of the voters. Sometimes it's called a town hall, um, town council. Um, si- if signatures are, enough signatures are collected, um, it can compel an open meeting of the voters. Um, in Barnstable, it's three hundred signatures. Um, attendees don't vote, so it's not quite the same as a town meeting in that it's not a voting situation. Um, what it is, though, it, it's to require an open forum for discussion of a certain issue. Um, officials and employees, um, who have information about the matter are present and answer questions. Um, so that's another mechanism that we'll discuss going forward. The last, um, which is kind of the ultimate accountability for your public officials is you can choose whether or not to. Include a recall provision. Um, and that would be a certain number of signatures would be required, um, in order to have a ballot question of whether. Whether an elected, uh, official should be recalled. Um, in general, for all of these, uh, I'm going to, I'm gonna give you the chart up, I'll. Show it to you now, but we'll also send it to you to get a, get an idea of what some other towns have done. Um, but it really is the, the choice of the number of signatures is somewhat of an art. Um, what you want is you want things to be, these things to be difficult, but not impossible. Um, so in other words, um, if you really want something overturned, um. If you want to have, you want to have the ability to overturn a town council, um, decision by referendum. On the other hand, you don't want to make it so easy that the town council's decisions are constantly disrupted. And ballot and brought to a ballot question and that, you know, the town is having an election every other week to deal with these ballot questions. So, um, we'll talk a lot about the thresholds that would be required under these. Okay. Um, I would like to, um. Stop sharing this document for a minute. Um, I'm going to share and, and I am also, we're also gonna send this to you, another document which talks a little bit about what other towns have done. But I wanted to take a minute and a breather and ask if anybody had any questions.
Um, just, just quickly, Pat, the, the, the four options for under town council, um. Do all thirteen town council communities use all of them or is that? It is, you know. No.
It's very much à la carte and, um, each one, um, you know, makes their own decisions about what to use. Um, there are a few other things that are gonna be in this provision in general. All town councils are given the authority to have, um, to bring their own ballot questions and petitions forward. Um, there will other, also be parts of this article where, um, cities and towns exempt certain subject matter from these. Um, but that will be part of a larger discussion. Um, so let me, um, share with you and you will. Let's see. Make sure that this is the right one. Okay, can you see something that is a chart with blue on top with, uh? Great. So these are some examples, um, and I'm gonna send this to you, um, of what some other towns do. I'll just run across Barnstable since it's fairly close. Um, they do have the free petition. Um, option, it requires a hundred and fifty signatures. They do have what we call the residence initiative, which is the ballot question, putting something on the ballot. Um, that requires, um, ten percent of the total number of voters. Most of these are of the total number of voters. Um, some, a couple will be, um, one will be. Total number of voters in the last election, but we will go through that in more detail when you're making your decisions. Um. Um, Barnstable does have a referendum question and five percent, um. Of voters must sign it in order for that to happen. Um, if you look down, five percent is kind of, is fairly standard for this. Um, but the others have, you know, have, it's, it's interesting in that it's either five percent or fifteen percent. It's, um, you know, it, it just depends on how difficult you want this to, to, to be for this to happen. Um, so for recall. Um. Barnstable does have recall. It requires ten percent of signatures. Um, and recall is really something that. Varies among towns, um, some have it, some don't. It's a decision that you can make, um, usually with a recall provision. Um, recalls are not brought in the first six months of someone's term or the last six months, the first six months to kind of give them a chance to get going. And in the last six months, because there's gonna be an election in six months anyway. So, um, why, why go through this process, um, when there's gonna be elections on the corner? Um, for town hall, town hall is a little less, is. Is a little less, is a little more rare, um, little more unique. Um, town hall is in. Amherst, Barnstable, um, and North Attleboro right now. Um, an interesting item that we can point out in, with respect to town hall is that for the town hall process. Amherst uses the words two hundred residents as opposed to two hundred voters. Otherwise, all of these are based on voters. Um, and. Part of the reason is, you know, part of the reason for that is most of these are based on voters because. Um, how many, how many, um, the signature thresholds are based on voters because it would then be the voters who would actually have to go and vote on the initiative? Or the referendum or the recall. Um, and with respect to town hall, which is more of an informational. Meeting, um, Amherst chose to expand it to use the word residents rather than voters. So I will be giving you a copy of this as well, so we can talk about things. Um, I did email the clerk and ask her to, or to give me the number of registered voters. In Antucket, maybe you guys know that. Um, but that way, what we can do is talk about, okay, what does it mean if we say five percent of registered voters? How many people is that? So when we get that number, we can do the math and you can actually take a look at what do you think is gonna be reasonable. Um, so. Let me stop and see if you have any questions on this. You'll be getting this, um, chart.
Yeah, it's good, it's good to see what some of the other towns are doing.
Great. So I'll stop sharing for a minute.
Good.
I'm just thinking about the, um, I can't remember which town it was now, but whether we say residents or voters and just to throw out that. We are trying to get more people who. Can't vote now, uh, to represent more of the population. So would we consider running residents instead of voters? That would have opened up to non-voting taxpayers and it would open up to people who are not. Um, legal.
Non-voting taxpayers and not residents. By definition.
Oh, by definition.
Because they don't pay the taxes here. Residents pay your federal taxes at the.
So resident is a technical term that's tied to, okay. Okay. So.
Good.
I also have a tough time recalling power to, to individuals who didn't get the vote to put the person into the job first in the first place.
Well, this is something that we've been discussing about how to get more representation, so might as well.
Well, they can speak, but they still can't vote.
Yeah.
And that's still important.
Uh, Pat, thanks so much. Um, I appreciate getting that because it was just for everybody's background. I have, um, I had a, a question, a follow-up question from Anna Waz, uh, following the meeting that we had at the Athenaeum a couple of days ago. And she was the one who wanted to ask me about, um. What sort of public access would occur? Would, would, would there be under a town council? I, I appreciate you throwing that together and I look forward to chatting about it the next time. So. Any other subject matter, any other subjects or issues? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Move back up? Good. Curtis?
Hi.
Oh. Rachel?
I.
Jill? Looks like Tom.
Hi.
All right, Jeff?
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Joe, hi. Thank you all. Appreciate everybody's participation today.
Thank you.